Mayor of Tuckahoe, and I'm so glad to see a full house. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
President.
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 Present. Hello, Chloe. How are you? And today, we have two appointments, so I'm going to ask for a motion authorizing the appointment of Andrew Coleman, as Secretary to Administrator, and Isabella Troiano, as a police officer in Tuckahoe. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'd like to ask Isabella to come up with someone who will hold her Bible and in her.
Mayor.
Yep, thank you. And just, I want to make sure your back is not to your c-.
For shake.
Face this way? No, no, no. Face this way? I don't know. Anyway, it doesn't matter. So just repeat after me. I, Isabella Troiano,
Troiano.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
The Constitution of the State of New York,
The Constitution of the State of New York,
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer in Tuckahoe to the best of my ability. It's a lot, right? Do you, do you promise to faithfully discharge the duties of police officer in Tuckahoe to the best of your ability?
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations and welcome. Mom, are you gonna pin her?
Find a box.
So congratulations to Officer Troiano. We'll let you say a few words.
Yeah. I would like to thank the entire committee, especially Mayor Andino, for this great opportunity. I also want to thank my chief for this, and everyone that has supported me through this journey. And I hope to do great things in my future. And I'm very happy to have chosen Tuckahoe.
We're happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isabella. Chief?
Good evening, Village Board. I'd like to welcome Isabella Troiano on board. Isabella's a resident of this village for 20 years, born and bred in Tuckahoe. She's aspired to become a police officer. She graduated Eastchester High School. She's currently obtaining her degree in psychology at the Owen University. We expect big things from Isabella, and we look forward to welcoming another female on our team here in the village.
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
There, for those who are coming in, there are some seats up front. If there's anyone else that would like to wish Officer Troiano well, you may do so now. Anyone on the board? Deputy Mayor?
On behalf of the whole board, we just really want to say congratulations. Your passion for law enforcement really showed through in your interview, and we're really excited to see what you have and what the future holds for you. So congratulations and congratulations to your family.
Anyone else? Okay, and I just want to say, I am super excited that before I leave office, we have yet another woman on the police force. This has been conversations that the chief and I have had since I came into office to make sure that women are serving on that board. Research shows that women do very well in law enforcement with diffusing, with minimizing conflict. And so I'm super excited that we're still on track to continue to increase the number of women to just simply complement the police department that we already have. So thank you very much, Chief, for accepting the charge and working hard to get there. The next item on the agenda is a citation presented to Kai Rogers. Kai Rogers is a student in the Tuckahoe schools. And I watched the last Tuckahoe school board meeting, and I was thoroughly impressed to see Kai serving on the board as a student board member. And when they started to talk about Kai, I remembered when I first met her. And she's just an extraordinary young lady. I think it's important for us to... Come on, come on up. There's, there are lots of seats up front if anybody wants. And so I want to ask Kai and her mom, and anyone else that you'd like to come up, to come forward, because I'd like to present you with a citation, Kai. Come up here. You can just stand here.
Hi, Kai.
I'm gonna read this, Kai, if you could just face.
Come closer to me.
So on behalf of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees and the residents of the village of Tuckahoe, it's my honor to recognize Kai Rogers for her leadership, academic excellence, and contributions to the community. Kai is a leader both on and off the field, a three-sport varsity captain in tennis, basketball, and softball. She demonstrates dedication, teamwork, and excellence beyond athletics, though. As school president and ex-officio student board member, she represents her peers with integrity, helping to make decisions that impact the student body. A member and vice president of the National Honor Society and of the Spanish Honor Society, Kai has maintained academic excellence while giving back to her community. Through her involvement in Glamour Girls, Kai visits senior citizens in retirement homes offering kindness and compassion. As a member of the Fuller Center, she helps build homes and plants gardens for those in need. Kai also contributes her creativity to the Images Magazine Club by writing short stories and to the Varsity Club, where she helps make decisions that enhance school athletics and spirit. I don't know where you get all this energy and time to do it. Beyond school, Kai serves as a rock for her family, according to her mom, and continues to demonstrate leadership, care, and dependability in all that she does, including your work as a babysitter. Her character, service, and perseverance make her a constant source of inspiration for many. The village of Tuckahoe commends Kai Rogers for her accomplishments and impact, her commitment to excellence, service, and leadership, serves as a model for her peers and adults alike, as well as for future generations. Presented on this third day of November 2025. Congratulations, Kai. We're so proud of you.
Good mom.
Good job to mom.
You can go there if you want. Basketball. Oh! Please, speak about her.
Hi, guys. I'm lucky enough to have coached Kai Rogers now for four years, and that's just a testament of her character. And she's making Tuckahoe a better place, and she's gonna have the future generations, half of what they do will be an amazing accomplishment. But Kai, I'm, you know, they say, you know, kids look up to adults. I look up to you. You've, you know. And it amazes me every day.
She's telling me no, but um...
That's a mom's duty, embarrass you.
I always knew Kai was gonna be something special because TMI, Kai birthed herself. She came out, she was with no doctor in the room. She was ready to come, and she did. And she's just an amazing, amazing person. And we all love you.
You wanna say something? Kai, do you wanna say something?
Um, I just want to say thank you, and I'm happy that I have the opportunity to give back in any, anything that I can. So just thank you for this tonight. Try not to cry right now. Um, but I'm very grateful for this. So thank you. And then I'll take one more.
Okay, if Officer Troiano's family would like to go and celebrate, you may do so now. You can, you're welcome to stay, but it's gonna be a little long night. Just letting, just saying.
I'd go.
What's, what's going on with the monitors?
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jeez Louise.
Can I push back? I gotta get to the video.
If anybody wants to move forward, you sure can if you want to move up in your seats. Hey Chloe, come give me a high five. We're matching. We're matching, Chloe. Alrighty. It's here. Okay, we can close the door. I know people are excited. It's okay. Alrighty, the next thing on our agenda is Tuckahoe's land acknowledgement. And I'd like to ask, there she is, Jenny Steinhagen. She is the Chair of our Tuckahoe Historic Preservation Commission. Oh yeah, I did it. I did them all together. So what I'd like to do is have Jenny talk a little bit about this land acknowledgement and what it means. And then I will ask the board to authorize the land acknowledgement, and then we'll talk a little bit more about it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Marandino, members of the board. And Marandino, thank you so much for your support of Tuckahoe's history. It's a pleasure to share a little bit of information about what we know about the original inhabitants of Tuckahoe. Native Americans were the original inhabitants of the land that includes today's village of Tuckahoe. In the 1600s, the area was described as a wilderness with forests so dense that travel by waterways was the best way to get around. Europeans from Connecticut settled in Eastchester in 1664, forming the Eastchester Covenant in 1665. In 1666, they entered into a land acquisition with the local Native Americans, Alenape-speaking people. A significant amount of land was turned over to the new inhabitants and taken away from the Native Americans. Thirty-four years later, in 1700, a new deed was signed between the Eastchester delegation and representatives of the Native Americans, turning over 7,000 acres of land to Eastchester, which would become known as the Longreach. It was much bigger than today's Eastchester. It went as far as north as Skarsdown, included, of course, all of Tuckahoe, Eastchester, Bronx Mill, Mount Vernon, and parts of today's Bronx, from the Bronx River east to the Hutchinson River. History has recorded the names of the Native Americans who signed this deed. Waramatapius, Anhook, and Porridge. Grammatan Sachem was a witness to the deed. On behalf of Eastchester, one of the town's inhabitants, Edmund Ward, paid the following to the Native Americans for the 7,000 acres. Thirteen guns, twelve coats, twelve kettles, twelve axes, two woodworking tools, and four barrels of cider. It is not known what the Alenape-speaking peoples were told or understood about what they were agreeing to in these so-called deals, but we see them now for what they were. Inhabitants of Eastchester would be allotted acreage within the Longreach. Edmund Ward would receive his first choice of 50 acres of the 7,000 acres, and he chose the land that became much of today's Tuckahoe. After 1700, the presence of the Native Americans would be seen less and less in Tuckahoe until hardly at all. Yet, they remain a lasting part of the village. The village's very name comes from a bulbous root that was used as food by the Native Americans. The Alenape people, Alenape-speaking peoples are gone from Tuckahoe, but they are not forgotten. By recognizing the presence and impact of the original Alenape inhabitants of this land, we can also commit to continuing to tell, research, remember, share, and honor their legacy in Tuckahoe for generations to come.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have trustee Gachion, who's going to help me with the reading of the land acknowledgement. Before we do, I want to take a moment to reflect on the significance of this moment for our community. The village of Tuckahoe is taking an important step forward with the passing of our historic preservation legislation, an effort that ensures we protect and honor the places, stories, and architecture that have shaped Tuckahoe's identity. However, preservation is not only about buildings, landmarks, and events, it's also about remembering the people and cultures who came before us. In that spirit, I reached out to the Alenape Center, whose aim is to reclaim and sustain Alenape presence and revive their language, traditions, and knowledge systems. My communications with Adrian Coomans, the founding member and deputy director, solidified my desire to ensure that when we speak of our history, we don't exclude the very people who made it possible for us to be here. I'm honored that I believe the executive director, Joe Baker, is on. Am I right, David? No? Okay, that might be Joe. Joining us this evening, his presence adds meaning to this occasion as we recognize the Alenape nation who inhabited this land long before Tuckahoe was established. We acknowledge both their deep connection to this region and the painful history of their displacement. This acknowledgement is not symbolic. It's a meaningful act of respect and truth-telling. Understanding our history and all its complexity is crucial for us all. It helps us build a more informed, compassionate, and inclusive community. This acknowledgement is one small but significant step in the right direction, a recognition of the past and a commitment to continue learning and growing in our understanding of it. So before we get to the land acknowledgement itself, I want to take us to resolution number two, authorizing a land acknowledgement in the village of Tuckahoe. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And I'm gonna ask trustee Gachion to read the land acknowledgement and offer remarks if he so chooses.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say a couple of words about Mr. Joe Baker, who is-
So I want to ask if he is on. Mr. Baker, if you're on, could you just let us know? Okay.
So we'll say a couple of words. He has a very extensive resume, so it's not something that we're gonna read word for word tonight. But he is the founding member and executive director of the Alenape Center. He is a direct descendant of many notable Alenape leaders. He is an artist, educator, and curator, and a visiting professor of museum studies at Colorado College. And he is a fellow veteran. He's an Air Force veteran, which we won't hold against him. But he's done a, he has quite an extensive resume. So one of the things, and I know, Marandino, this isn't about you, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say it anyway, that Marandino has done really well is kept Tuckahoe moving forward while adapting to the changing needs of the village, but also preserving our history. And this land acknowledgement is long overdue for the Native Americans, the Alenape, and the other tribes, specifically who are forced into one-sided treaties that were more often than not unfulfilled by the European settlers. And this is just one of the things that we can do to show that Tuckahoe doesn't forget. Acknowledgement of the Alenape Nation. The village of Tuckahoe acknowledges that we were, we are in the ancestral homelands of the Alenape nation, specifically the Muncie-speaking people. For thousands of years before European colonization, the Alenape maintained complex systems of agriculture, hunting, and fishing throughout this territory and along the Bronx River. The name Tuckahoe derives from the Alenape word for arrow, arum, or golden club, an edible plant root that was cultivated and harvested here. This name reflects the extensive ecological knowledge the Alenape hold about the plants and waterways of this region. The Alenape were forcibly removed from their homelands through colonial violence, fraudulent treaties, and systematic dispossession. Despite centuries of erasure, Alenape communities continue to exist as sovereign nations. Today, Alenape people maintain their language, cultural practices, and traditions while working to educate others about their history and ongoing presence. We recognize the Alenape peoples' enduring connection to these lands, commit to learning this history, and supporting Alenape sovereignty and self-determination. Federally recognized Alenape nations include the Delaware Nation, Delaware Tribe of Indians, Stockbridge-Muncie Community. And this will go right up here in our village hall.
If there's anybody who would like to come forward and weigh in, you may do so now. Okay. Thank you, Tuckahoe. I know that there are some young people here that have to go to school tomorrow, and I was told that some of them would like to come forward to say a few words, you know, to say goodbye to me. And so I'm gonna allow them to do that now so that they can go home and get enough rest to get up and go to school.
We need to still-
Just bring it down.
We would just like to say, thank you, Mayor O'Mara. You have been a great mayor and supporter to us. Thank you, Mayor O'Mara. We have something for you.
Bring it up. Let's see. Okay. May I read it?
Sure.
Mayor O'Mara, I'd like to wish you a very happy town meeting for the last time, and I appreciate you being our mayor. Thank you. That's from Denver. And, oh, I got a little pop-up. I got a pop-up card. And from Hudson. Thank you for being such a great mayor and supporter for me and Tuckahoe Kids Table. I am running for Cottle Geo. Hope to do more. I love it, campaigning. I love that. Any other young people? I see Skylar's mom forcing her, so, you know. What are you gonna do? Skylar, that's what parents do. Sorry.
Thank you for everything that you've done for this town. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Love you.
Love you too. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll take all the love, all the love today. Oh, Justin beat you to it.
I just want to say thank you for everything you have done for Tuckahoe and for me. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Anderson. I'm a senior Girl Scout and a proud resident of Tuckahoe. It's such an honor to be here tonight at Mayor O'Mara Andino's last village hall meeting to express how much you meant to Girl Scout Troop 2642, my family, and especially myself. Mayor Andino, over the past five years, you have been more than a leader. You have been a mentor, a guide, and a friend. You have shown me what it means to lead with strength, grace, and heart. Watching you make history as the first female mayor of our village has been inspirational. You didn't just open a door, but you built a pathway for every little girl who dares to dream big. You've graced our troop and myself with being a part of our journey, starting in 2020, as Brownies interviewing you for our Women in Democracy, to juniors honoring you as the first female mayor of our village, and cadets, as a cadet helping sway you into office for your second term. And today, as a senior Girl Scout practicing public speaking and learning more about democracy, those moments reminded me how powerful it is to see women lifting up other women and how your leadership continues to inspire so many young girls like me to reach higher. When I was in second grade, I remember asking the mayor if there's ever been a female mayor of Tuckahoe, and he replied, "No, but maybe one day you can be mayor." And now, thanks to you, Mayor O'Mara, the dream feels possible, not just for me, but for every girl in the village. Thank you for breaking barriers, challenging the status quo, and paving the way for little girls with big dreams. Congratulations on all that you've accomplished as trustee and as mayor, and the countless, and on the countless young women whose lives you've changed and inspired along the way. Troop 2642, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and can only imagine the impact you will continue to have. Thank you.
I'll look at this later.
No crying now.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay. Chloe, it's okay. You and I, we've got it.
Is it only young people?
Say again?
It's not your bedtime yet.
The rest of you can stay awake. So if there are any families who need to take their, their young ones home so that they can get their rest, you may do so now, before I open up the public hearing. Okay. Have a good night. Thank you. Bye. Okay, so we're gonna go to public hearings. So we need to open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the Tuckahoe Comprehensive Plan. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the public hearing is now open for anyone to weigh in on the comprehensive plan. As you all know, there, there have been several sessions where we got community input. The comprehensive plan has been posted on our website. I think I will let the deputy mayor talk a little bit about it, and, you know, David Burke, our village administrator, can weigh in just to give people a very broad overview of what the comprehensive plan is.
So over the course of the last year, we've been, a year and a half, we've been involved in this comprehensive planning process. That included creating a committee that was put together by Dr. Howell, the former deputy mayor. During that process, during the process, we did a village-wide survey where we had about 250 respondents. Then we did three community forums, of which the, one had 75 people there, one had about 80 people there, one was a little bit smaller. We also did a teen town hall and a business community forum, and we invited every single business in the community to participate in that. And that was all to get input on the, the vision and the future of the village of Tuckahoe. And that was all to get input on the, the, the vision and the future of the Village of Tukahoe. So some of the, we, in this process, we also hired a professional planning firm that helped with, with creating this, this master plan. We did that because they offer expertise and objectivity. We wanted to make sure that nobody thought that there was anybody who was pushing their own agenda or their own thoughts and ideas into this plan, and that it was really representative of the entire village. It was inclusive, and the voices were diverse. Also, when you hire a firm like this, they use really advanced data and analytical tools. They use GIS, and they have quantitative and qualitative researchers who can do high-level data analysis that is required for this type of plan. They engage, they engage the public, and so they have multiple platforms for people to, to voice their opinions and their ideas. In addition to the forums that I discussed further previously, there were opportunities to email in ideas and suggestions, and several people did that. Also, we don't happen to have a planner on staff here. That's not something that we have. We have a very small crew on village staff. And so we want, we needed to go outside because we needed, you know, it would be way beyond our capacity. Also, credibility and funding. So when we seek grant money from state, federal, and county organizations, we often need to point to where in the comprehensive plan that it, like, there is need for this thing that we're asking for. And so it offers us some credibility, and that's really important when you're seeking money. And then, you know, implementation and follow-through. We want to make sure that we're not just creating a plan and then putting it on a shelf somewhere. We want to make sure that we can actually do the things that we set forth in the plan. So it was really important for us to have a, a professional planner sit with us and kind of go over those details. So I just want to, I want everyone to think about this as an investment in our future. It really is an investment in our future, and we, they, the, the committee did real due diligence in finding the best firm for our needs. So some of the things that the plan, the plan talks, it has, just so you know, 100 and, we talked about 31 goals and 142 strategies for implementing those goals. So it is quite extensive. I, I ask you to please go ahead and take a look at it, even if you haven't yet. It's never too late, and these are conversations that will be ongoing. But some of the things that we look at are land use and zoning, economic development, the Marbledale revitalization, transportation, housing, which includes several strategies for expanding workforce and senior housing, and current, encouraging transit-oriented development and moderate, medium and moderate income housing there, and then streamline permitting and incentivize affordable units. Other things that we talk about are environmental resiliency, floodwater resiliency, and then recreation and entertainment, and historic preservation, and preserving this, the character of this village. So these are all the things that it includes. And it is a culmination of all of your voices, all of your input. So I just want to thank the village, and I definitely want to thank the Comprehensive Planning Committee and Dr. Howell for all the hard work that they put into this, and the village administrator also. This is a labor of love, and it is our plan for the future. The other thing I want to highlight is that it is a working document, almost like the Constitution. So it is our guide, it is our North Star, and it is the, the thing that we will kind of set our agenda by. But it is flexible and malleable, just like, because we have, you know, we, we, things happen, like pandemics, and we always have to be flexible there. So just want to say thank you to everybody involved in this process. It was very eye-opening. I learned a lot, and I hope that you all did too.
Yes, and I want to also echo the deputy mayor's sentiments, thanking everyone who made time and made space in your lives, which I know are very busy, to come out and to give input on what you want for the future of your community. So I want to ask if there is anyone, the public hearing is open. If anyone would like to come forward and weigh in. Any comments are welcome. We will take note. And the board will incorporate your suggestions in the best way possible. So is there anyone?
I don't have any specific, my name's Chris DiGiorgio, 50 Columbus Avenue. I don't have any specific recommendations for the master plan at this time. But I just want to say how important the work you all did and, and brought all the forces together to allow this. I've heard some criticism about the spending of the money for this, more specifically. And I just want to say it's foolhardy for people to say that. I have been advocating, I want to say since 2003, for up-to-date master plans. And in 2000, I believe it was 10, we had our, or maybe even nine, was our last master plan. So that's right when the iPhone just started coming out. We didn't have COVID yet. So honestly, it's long, long overdue. And the one thing, one suggestion I will say, and I said this back in 2019, and I'll reiterate it now. And that is, every decade, we should be evaluating whether the master plan is up-to-date enough to see where this village is going. You know, they had, they've had, in county government, Vision 2000, Vision 2010, Vision 2020. We should be doing that in Tukahoe as well. So kudos to you, Mayor O'Mara, and the whole board for really looking at this and understanding the importance. There's, nothing gets accomplished without a plan. And so it's important we have a plan. So thank you very much for doing this, and again, my congratulations for this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to weigh in? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Marandino? I'm on Zoom. This is Pam Hudson, 64 Berlin Place. I don't know if someone was watching the Zoom screen. I would like to just very quickly add my concern about the light on Columbus Avenue right across from the library, and my concern about having that light removed. I'm concerned about safety issues, especially with people who are in wheelchairs, who I personally have had to take across the street there. And I know that that's part of the big plan, to look at all of those intersections. And I would just like to voice my concern about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I think if you're ready, three, Ben, then. Now with this new comprehensive, hopefully it coincides with the zoning codes too, trying to make us easier to say yes or no. Hopefully, hopefully it just coincides.
That's the plan. That's the plan. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I will take us to the first resolution authorizing the adoption of the Tukahoe Comprehensive Plan. May I have a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Tukahoe. You have a Tukahoe Comprehensive Plan. I want to just reiterate what the, what the deputy, soon-to-be mayor said, that this is a living document. So I want for those of you who have, still have input, to know that your input will be heard. If there are, you know, concerns that you have, please bring them forward. Do not say, well, they've already voted on it, it's done. It's never done. It's a working document, as Chris DiGiorgio stated. And your input into this document is very important. The other point that I want to make when, you know, there was a commentary that we've spent $100,000 on this. You know, I want you to think about it in terms like of the bigger picture. Our, our budget is about $15 million, right? David, are we at 15 million now? Around $15 million. And the comprehensive plan, we spent about a little over $100,000. So we're talking over 10 years, on average, $10,000 a year, I think is money well spent, so that we have a plan and we're not just doing things arbitrarily. That's important. I am the CEO for a not-for-profit, and we have a strategic plan that we look at how we're doing things, where we want to go, and how we're going to get there. And we do every five years, because the landscape in my industry is changing so much. So I want for you to realize that these are decisions that are being made in the best interest long-term. We're not looking at short-term solutions, because short-term solutions are not necessarily the best way to look at how we're moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure I made note of that. Okay, so we're going to go to the approval of minutes for the October 6 meeting. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board. And resolution, so let's go to resolution number three. May I have a motion authorizing an IMA with Westchester County for use of the firing range facility, which we have regularly?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution number four speaks about hiring an engineering company to evaluate the Yonkers Avenue and Scarsdale Road intersection. We have gotten lots of complaints. There have been accidents in that section. So the board would like to authorize an, an engineer to come and evaluate to determine what, if anything, needs to happen in that intersection. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that is money well spent. Thank you, board. Number, resolution number five. Now I want to talk a little bit about this, because I've been in, in public office for eight years now, four as trustee and four as mayor. And I will tell you that there are many people who will not run for office because they can't afford to. If they don't have a job that's flexible, if they leave work and they're not going to get paid. This is a job that's really a volunteer sort of work. And it's important for us to at least be able to give people an ability to pay some bills, go to the events, you know. Trustee Lang and I were just talking, we spend more money going to fundraisers and to support the seniors and to support the different events. And so I have been advocating for an increase, a very small increase in the salaries for the village board. And I wanted to do that on my way out, because I don't, I'm not looking to benefit from it. So this is purely because I think that the future pool of people that will run will at least be somewhat interested, and it marginalizes a lot of people because they can't afford to do it. So, you know, I, I partnered with trustee Lang, and we talked about it, because he and I are leaving. And we agreed that the work is, it's hard work. This is not work, you know, people, it's, sometimes it's thankless job, and you are called upon for everything that goes wrong, and you rarely get a thank you. And I think that the board deserves a minor increase. When we looked at, over the years, if we looked at the increases, and we also looked at what other municipalities are making. But if we looked at the increases from 2002, if the board received a mere 2% increase, they would be at $11,700 for the mayor and $8,100 for the trustee. So we are recommending, you know, the mayor's current salary is $7,000. We're recommending an increase of $10,000 to $10,000, a $3,000 increase for the year, and the trustee's salary, that's now $5,000, to be increased to $7,000. And I think that's a very reasonable increase for the kind of work that this board does. So I want to ask for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Danny, Danny approved and seconded.
That's right. We got to get the right people up here.
That's true. So thank you for the motion. Who seconded? Daryl. Okay, may I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And thank you, Tukahoe, for understanding that this job does require work. Okay, may I have a motion to authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of $232,237?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We got to pay the bills. And we have two surplus vehicles, so may I have a motion to authorize the sale of the surplus vehicle 2013 Ford Explorer and 2019 Dodge Durango?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Did you get any, Danny? You didn't get any of them?
No, no.
Got to get on there. Okay, so this is going to take us to departmental reports. And I'll see if our Camille has anything. She does. I have a feeling it's not fun news. Give her, give her a mic, someone.
The village tax bills are in the mail.
They're in the mail. The village tax bills are in the mail. Did you guys hear that?
Online payments are available for the second half. Go to our website, click the red flag, then click Village of Tukahoe Tax Payment Vendor. Enter your bill number, section, block, and lot, and then click second half, and you can pay online. Also, resident parking permits expire November 30th. Just want to remind everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. We have the chief of police, Larry Rota.
Good evening again, mayor, village board.
Good evening, chief.
I'd like to start off by announcing, I just received notification that we received another $11,600 for the governor's traffic safety enforcement grant we applied for. So that gives us grant funding from New York State for traffic safety. This past month, we had two wonderful community police events with our police officers. We had Call the Cop down at the station mall, and we also had pizza with police in the Fisher Avenue Park, both great turnout events. And this past week, we had pizza, pizza luncheon with our seniors, which was a great time. And we showed up there and forced, and they really loved that. With daylight saving times about us now, I want to remind everyone to change their batteries in their smoke alarms. Also, if you have a Ring alarm system with wireless sensors, it's a good, a good time to go into settings and check health status in your wireless sensors, because as it gets colder, the batteries deplete. Crime tip of the month, with the holiday seasons upon us, we, we reinforce this every year, but this year especially for expensive packages, we're recommending that you require a signature on the package or ship it to an Amazon Dropbox or to somebody you know that will be home. So far, we've been okay in the village here, but we are seeing an increase in larcenies throughout Westchester County. Also, I'm recommending not to mail gift cards and/or cash for holiday gifts in the mail this year. Further, I'm recommending we deposit any important envelopes, especially in the beginning of the month, for checks going out inside the post office, not in the post office boxes. We're seeing a crime trend, not in Tukahoe, but throughout the county of mailbox phishing, where they go in and take precious envelopes and hard-earned money and checks out of our post office boxes. It's been an ongoing issue. They redesigned the boxes, but they figured out a way. Again, we're not seeing it here, but we recommend to not mail anything on the street in the post office boxes. Go inside for important things. I'd also like to take this opportunity to say thank you to this board for providing the confidence in me as chief. Looking back tonight of the past, in the past two years, the officers we've hired here, from Christopher Bosley to David Ventora to Jessica Gonzalez to Melvin Banks, and now female officer Isabella Troyano. We're building a really super good team here of officers, super proud of them. And that's done with the support of this board and this mayor. So I want to thank you for a wonderful two years of being chief with you and for giving me the confidence in seeing the future of this village and moving forward in policing in 2025, because we're doing things, some great, great things in this village. And I'm super proud to be here. I'm super proud to work for a board like this. And I want to wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and you'll always be my mayor.
Thank you. I don't think Kara is going to like that.
I'll allow it.
Kara will allow that. Can we have our superintendent, Frank DeMarco? Welcome back, Frank. We've missed you.
I missed everybody as well. Yeah, glad to be back. So I have so much catching up to do, but no, I'm going to cut it all. Because I know you don't want me to stand up here all night. But first of all, we want to welcome Isabella Troyano as well, and also Andrew Coleman on their new assignment. And I want to congratulate Kyle Rogers as well. I just want to brief one thing. I just want to talk about leaf season quickly, because I've been getting so many calls. I'm going to go through it really quickly. From October 15th to December 1st is leaf season, so we go around vacuuming the leaves. I asked neighbors to Um, I asked neighbors to please share piles with your neighbors so there's not piles and taking taking over parking spots throughout all these uh small roads. Um, don't block the storm catch bases, and please fire hydrants. I don't want to hear Anthony Laurie. Alright, no stumps, no rocks, containers. You could still put it in open containers. We do pick that up on Thursday.
He's coming for you next month.
I know.
I won't be here to defend you, just saying.
No plastic bags and uh there's no schedule. When we're done from one end of the town, we just come back and and go to the other end. Um, obviously, last month, I haven't been here for a couple of months, but last year I want to support, um, we at DPW do support breast cancer awareness. So if you do see my men fashioning the pink shirts, jackets, and um pullovers, uh, it's only because we've been doing that for twelve years now. We've been supporting breast cancer awareness um in the month of October. DPW Day was a major success, October twenty-fifth on a Saturday. Uh, we had a lot going on. It was a great day. Thank God, no rain, no snow. And um, everybody really came out to enjoy the day. It gave my men the opportunity really to share with every residents and and those in Tuckahoe what they really do on a day-to-day basis. Um, most importantly, I really cut this short, but I want to congratulate you for um for being such a big support to all of us. Uh, I wish you well, health and happiness in your future endeavors. And um, thank you. It's been a pleasure working for you.
Thank you.
With you. And Danny, I want to wish you the same. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you as well. Um, and all I really have to say is happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Frank. So I'm just wondering if it's Swadish Pashnanda or Elaine Provenzano who's doing a report for the library? Swadish is like, listen, I'm retired. I'm not doing any of that. So we'll have the libraries report, Elaine Provenzano.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to November. Want to tell you some wonderful things that are happening at the library. Um, first of all, the library will be closed on the following days. We are open tomorrow. And some libraries are closed. We are open. But will be closed Veterans Day next Tuesday. Will be closed Thanksgiving. We close um early at five o'clock Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and then we're closed Thursday and Friday, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. But we are open on Saturday. Um, some of the things we have coming up is tomorrow, we have Eating in Harmony with Nature, the Endocrine System, that's online. November fourth at seven o'clock. We have a dementia talk, myths, facts, and everyday prevention. Saturday, November eighth at two o'clock. Mystery Adult Book Club, the Marlowe Murder Club, and that is on Wednesday, November twelfth at six thirty. Hybrid Memoir Writing, if you want to join me, you can come in person or online next Thursday, November thirteenth at one o'clock. Highlights of the Hebrew Home Sculpture Garden, Monday, November seventeenth at two o'clock. That's an online program. And then we have a local author, Mary Dirk, and will be joining us uh on Wednesday, November nineteenth at six thirty to talk about her new book, West of Ninth. We have a cooking program with Wendy Predgiato on Thursday, November twentieth at three thirty. We're gonna miss your cooking, but I'm gonna get to that.
I will still be cooking.
I'm gonna get to that, yes. Um, and she's doing a fall harvest bisque. Um, and oh, she was a Food Network winner. I didn't know that. In-person painting, Still Life with Squash and Gourds on Saturday, November twenty-second at twelve o'clock. And then we have our Hybrid Book Club, the Library of Lost and Found, in the library and online on Monday, November twenty-fourth at six thirty. Then we have our recurring programs, Tai Chi is tomorrow at nine AM, and that is going to be in the library because the community center will be used for voting. So if anybody's coming for Tai Chi, please come to the library. In-person yoga on Fridays at nine o'clock, Mahjong Tuesdays at one o'clock. One-on-one job coaching services Wednesdays at five thirty and Saturdays at ten thirty, except for the twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth. And then we have tech help at two o'clock on Thursdays. Some programs for teens, we have a teen game night coming up on Wednesday, November fifth at six o'clock. And then for the kiddos, we have Paws and Tails. Um, if you want to see Lucy, our certified therapy dog, and read to her. Has Carmella come for that? Yeah, she's wonderful. Um, and that's Monday, November tenth at three thirty. That's ages three and up. And then we have a new program, Tummy Time, that Ms. Florence does on Wednesday, November twelfth at eleven AM. That's for ages zero to fourteen months. So it's just for infants and a little bit older. Um, Legos at the library, Friday, November fourteenth at three thirty, ages four to ten. We have a junior sewing class. Um, we're doing a felt friend, and that's going to be Mondays, November seventeenth and twenty-fourth, ages eight to twelve. Kids Craft Be Thankful Frame, that's Tuesday, November eighteenth at three thirty, ages four to ten. Pre-K Yoga with Budding Buddhas, Thursday, November twentieth, eleven AM, ages two and a half to five. Musical Adventures at the Library, Monday, November twenty-fourth at twelve thirty, ages zero to seven. And then on Saturday, Thanksgiving weekend, if you're around, Ms. Florence is going to be doing a Snowflake Sun Catcher the twenty-ninth at eleven AM for ages four to ten. Now, our storytimes are Tuesdays and Fridays at eleven AM for ages two to six. We have one tomorrow in the library. I will be doing the program. This Ms. Florence isn't going to be here, but it will be in the library, not the community center. Pajama Storytime, Wednesday, November fifth at six PM. Let's Sing and Dance and Read with Ms. Nora, Thursday, November sixth at eleven fifteen AM, ages six months to three years. And Donnie Dew is back, Saturday, November fifteenth, one o'clock, ages zero to five. And she was just here a little while ago. Ms. Anaz will be doing bilingual storytime in the community center, Friday, November twenty-first at eleven AM, ages zero to five. And you can register for all of these programs online. And I just want to say, thank you, Omira. Thank you, Mayor Andino. All you have done for this village, as someone who lives here, someone who has had the opportunity to work with you, who has had the chance to sing and dance with you, cook with you. Um, you've been wonderful for the library and the children in the library and the adults. Um, the renovation, COVID, supporting our staff through COVID, helping us through through the, through those times. Um, and we'll really miss you, but we know that you will be back. You're definitely coming back to cook.
Yes, I'm gonna be.
Amongst other things.
I'm gonna be the deputy mayor. I'm getting appointed. It's a problem.
So thank, thank you so much, and I I I I also want to thank Danny. Um, again, we so appreciate everything um that you do and have done. And I do have those lamps in my garage so that Renee talked about. There's still, so we do still have some work to do for historic preservation. Um, so again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Gary, do you have anything for us?
I don't want to be a Camille Downer, but uh we're still involved in the um i- in the lawsuit with the ward house. Um, it's gotten to a discovery phase, which um there's an exchange of documents, and it's been taking a lot of village resources uh to provide them. Uh, so unfortunately, we're still involved in that. And we'll keep you posted as, you know, as as the lawsuit goes by. And and Mayor, I want to thank you for everything you've done, you know, uh, for me, for the village. You know, I've been teasing you the last few months that you're gonna miss us, but it's really us are gonna miss you. Um, so, but it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
And I thank you for everything.
Same to you.
And Danny, I want updates of your kids all the time. I don't know if the village knows this, but he has two college kids, you or I, and Cornell. Always get the updates. Amazing kids, and that's the important thing about what we do here. So thank you too, and you always make me laugh, and I appreciate that.
David, do you have anything for us?
I can steal my pen back. I know. Yeah, I have uh while I was listening to the department heads, I was saying, I think I have the easiest job because they provide such great updates every single month that I can just sit here and say, I have nothing to say because they do everything so good. So I just want to say thank you to all the department heads. This village is blessed to have them. Um, but just kind of a thank you to a couple of board members I know that aren't going to be um up on the dais anymore. So trustee Lang, uh, appreciate your passion for this community. Um, your, your quick whiffs and uh your interesting takes on pretty much everything, so uh thank you for that. And Mayor Andino, I can't believe it's been eight years where I told you it was all about the mayor.
And then it never happened, so I'm extremely disappointed.
Quickly learned that it's all about the board, and you know, so sorry about that. But um, you know, you're the third mayor I've worked with, and you know, every, every mayor brings their own kind of, you know, specialness to it, but uh I do appreciate you, your, your kind of take as being kind of the, the CEO that you are, where I can kind of use you as a sounding board, um, knowing that you're gonna provide kind of the advice to me to make this village better. So I always appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I will have remarks later, but it will take us to um some miscellaneous dates. They're not so miscellaneous, so I think we should change that. You know, I'm gonna be on that end. I'm gonna say, you guys do, do something. Uh, the village board work session in November is on November twenty-fifth at seven PM. The village board meeting is on December first, and I'm asking you all to fill this room because we will be swearing in our new board members, and we will have our new mayor, Kara Cronin. So we need to be here to to congratulate her and to encourage her and let her know that we are here to support her. Uh, we will have some refreshments, um, and a small reception after the swearing in, so I'm asking that every, the community come out and support. Um, and we'll have Winter Fest on December sixth uh from three to eight at Depot Square, and that will take us to uh Board of Trustees reports, and trustee Lang, your, your final one.
Right, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, so first of all, I'd like to um, our co- our condolences go out to the Vishi family. We recently lost longtime resident Eleanor Vishi. Our prayers are with your family. Um, congrats to Officer Troyano. Congrats to Kai Rogers for all of our hard work. Very impressive young lady. I don't have anything for beautification, but as far as our community center goes, naturally, we all know that tomorrow our elections will be held there. While you're there, say hello to Johnny. He likes when we will stop by and say hello to him. Um, and again, uh, so lastly, uh, this is my last meeting, so I wanted to thank the residents for supporting me throughout the years. Other than my wife and our sons, this has truly been the biggest honor of my life. Um, since the day I came to Tuckahoe, I just looked around and I seen just a wonderful place. I have so many firsts here in the village. Um, you know, first uh first, I mean, I can go on forever. But again, I do thank everybody who's supported me throughout the years, and um that's pretty much all I have. I encourage everyone to serve their community. It's um very rewarding, gratifying, and um it's a pretty cool thing. And uh, happy Thanksgiving. God bless Tuckahoe.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Gacion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna start first to uh trustee Lang. Danny, I just want to say that we might not always agree on everything, but I really want to tell you how much I appreciate how much you love Tuckahoe and how much I know that your actions represent that love. Um, as David said, it's been fun to serve beside you. This has been um a good experience for me. It's been fun working with you, and I want to thank you for your service to the village.
Thank you. So we are going to start with the Tuckahoe History Committee. Ms. Elaine is on double duty because she sends me very long reports for the history committee too, so I want to I'm not gonna read the whole, I'm gonna summarize. Um, I do want to say that we are looking forward to uh Carmine and Nick's launching of the Tuckahoe History Committee website. That'll be coming up this month. And reiterate that Ms. Elaine gave a walking tour of Main Street with the children from ECAP after school on October seventh. And the, the chief, the mayor and the deputy mayor joined that as well. The new Tuckahoe history presentations are being planned at the fountains. There's always something going on, and they continue to catalog and archive new materials. Actually, something that was really interesting the other day is we had some conversations in the, the foyer over here, and you know, someone was looking up at the cabinets, and they're like, what is all of this? I'm like, this is the archives, baby. Like, these are, this is Tuckahoe right here, so this is great. They had one social media post in October with over four thousand views and ninety-four interactions, so keep up the good work there. And if you are interested in assisting with the history committee, they meet at nine thirty at Village Hall on Wednesday. Historic Preservation Commission meeting on November twentieth at six thirty. Perfect, uh, right here in this room. Uh, veterans, on this past Saturday, we had a ceremony up at Lazden Park with the surviving members of the USS Westchester that was bombed fifty-eight years ago in Vietnam. It was uh really a remembrance of those who lost their lives and a reunion for those who survived. It was a somber event, but a very nice, nice event to see uh, to see those folks get back together, so I was happy to be part of that. This Friday upcoming, November seventh, the Westchester County Veteran Service Agency will hold its Veterans Day Ceremony. That is at Lazden Park at twelve o'clock. All are welcome. On Veterans Day proper, which is of course eleven eleven at eleven AM, we will be holding our ceremony locally at the community center at Lake Isle, and all are welcome to attend that. This year, the theme for that will be, we'll kind of be showing veterans throughout the ages, starting with the colonial Army and Navy, and then kind of moving it to uh to where we are today. So it'll be an interesting show. I put the slides together, so you know, they're gonna be really, really great. Um, what else? Sorry, I've got a bunch here. Oh. I'm not sure if I should have gotten with trustee Taylor first. I'm not sure if he's gonna mention this, but some people might be experiencing cut to SNAP benefits in the next few days, so sorry for stepping on your toes here.
Alright.
But if they need assistance with that, I ask them to please call the county DSS number, which is nine one four nine nine five three 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 three. And I also want to say that our condolences go out to the DiMarzo family. John DiMarzo was my neighbor on Bella Vista Street. And you could catch him any time of day, any day of the year, no matter how hot or how cold it was, tending to his garden in the front or his garden in the back. Uh, my kids would go over and he would uh entertain them, so my, my condolences go out to he and his family. He was a member of the Eastchester Italian American Club and just a, a really, really sweet man. Lastly, there isn't much that I can say about Mayor Andino that either hasn't been said or won't be said in a minute, so I'll be quick. Uh, she is fierce and smart, but also compassionate and generous. I've done my best to challenge her nerves, but I never seem to, to crack the surface. She is an inspiration to so many people, uh, to young women, to women of color, um, to people that look like me. Um, so I feel like I've been truly blessed as ha- as, as has the whole village to be able to see and experience her leadership firsthand. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor?
Eastchester Community Action Partnership, uh, like trustee Gacion just mentioned about the SNAP, which is the supplemental, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Because uh, these benefits have been cut. ECAP has already saw a uptick in their registration uh because obviously there's gonna be food insecurity. Uh, ECAP has just finished a one-week tech workshop for job readiness in Spanish in partnership with the STEM Alliance. They had ten participants who completed the workshop, and at the end of the completion, they received laptops. Thanksgiving will be here in about three weeks. Um, ECAP uh food pantry for, I can't even remember how many years, they always have uh Thanksgiving meals, turkeys, um, for families, like a whole box, everything you need, and for single people, maybe a ham or, 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 or turkey breasts or something like that, but with everything that goes with it. With the cut from the federal government, um, they're not receiving the, the normal amount of funding that they usually have. Uh, there's always been a number of people who support ECAP and who always donate to the food pantry. So I just want to let you know, they need it now more than ever. So I just want to let you know they need it now more than ever. Whatever you think you can do, whatever you can afford to do, please call Ecap at 914-337-7768 and they will let you know what they need. There's over 300 families that Ecap pantry services every month. That's a lot of people and it's going up. Every month is, is increasing. And then later on down the road, just, um, for people, just for information only, the MLK Martin Luther King Breakfast, annual breakfast will, at the Reform Church, this upcoming January is going to be on January 19th. The Toccoho Housing Authority. On October 14th, at the last Housing Authority meeting, uh, the board informed the tenants that the director, executive director, Irene Mitsvyski, uh, would be retiring effective December 31, 2025. We were also informed that the present, um, board chair, Donna Woltrop, would be stepping down. Donna was the board chair for eight years. In that meeting, a new board chair was installed, which is the board member Nancy Heightner Day. And a new board, chair to her, Tahisa Jackson was also installed, a vice chair. The board has already formed a committee to find a new THA executive director. With the hopes that that person will be in place at, in the first week in January. If not, they do have a contingency plan if it takes longer than that to have the person in place. The board also created a tenant survey form to get feedback from the tenants. And it can be done anonymously, anonymously if people choose to do it that way. Uh, the tenant commissioner's election will be held on December 12th. The petitions for candidates, uh, must be in by December 1st. The, I've spoken to many, many of the tenants, um, over this four years that I've been made the liaison. And so the tenants, the present board and I are looking forward to the new leadership under the new director, once that decision is made, to take THA in a new direction. To this Madam Mayor, Omira Andino. I'm going to read this because I was instructed by my wife, BB Anna Rojas Taylor, to write it down. And I've been married 37 years. I know how to take direction. I would like to say thank you for everything you have done for the village of Toccoho, for the residents of this village, for this present and past boards you have served on. And last, but certainly not least, for me and my family. The first time I heard your name from Ms. Lovely Billups, who is present right now, and was told you were running for trustee, my, the first thing out of my mouth was,
I don't know.
Who is Omira Andino? I don't know her. Well, it didn't take long for me to find out who you were and what you believed in and what you stood for, which was for everyone to have a voice and be heard, for everyone to not just feel, but to actually be included. For all the residents to have access to their local government and to govern in a way that makes a positive change in the lives of others. Your activism reminded me in many ways of my mother, Alma Lee Taylor, who was an activist in her own right. Your leadership during the pandemic, a time when no one could be sure what to do from one day to the next. Your leadership in uncertain times was positive proof that you were the right choice to lead this village. I mention my mother often, but I don't get to mention my father too often. So I'm going to mention Lucius Taylor tonight. You also reminded me of my dad, Lucius Taylor. Despite many attacks, personal attacks, you stood your ground. You never backed up and you never backed down. Lucius would be proud. It's because of your leadership that I am on this day as today. Don't ever tell the mayor you want to do something because she will come back and challenge you on it. And that's exactly what happened. So thank you for all you've done, for the lives you've touched and to God be the glory for the things he has done. And lastly, the vicious Vishi family, I've known the Vishis my whole life. And so I want to say condolences to the Vishi family.
Thank you, Trustee.
Oh, I am sorry. Just want to say one last thing. Because, because I'm liaison to the Ecap. So I'm not going to read them, give them to you, but the kids in the after school program, they wrote letters to the mayor and they actually made pictures. So I have all here and you can take that with you.
Thank you. This is a cherished moment. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. Um, on behalf of the seniors, I want to congratulate them first on a successful bingo night. Um, and they want me to make sure that I thank the Toccoho Police Department and Chief Rota for their wonderful pizza party. So thank you for that. I, yes, yeah, they deserve that. I personally want to thank the seniors for sponsoring the haunted trolley at the Candy Girl this year and Michelle Olivia and her daughter, who spent three and a half hours putting that together. That was an amazing thing. If you didn't get a chance to see it, you really do have to see it one day. I have a video. The seniors are not meeting tomorrow because voting is happening at Father Fata Hall, Father Fata Hall. Please make sure that you go out and vote. Whoever you vote for, it is very important to go out and vote tomorrow. It's your last chance in this election. I want to reiterate the condolences to the families of John DiMarzo and Eleanor Vishi, but also Lucretia DiRienzo, George Sigley Swigley, and my neighbor, Dr. Francis Capirelli. Condolences to their family. I want to thank everybody who turned out for the Candy Girl. There are really just so many people to thank. The big heroes of the day, of course, are our businesses. Nearly 40 of them participated, but also our DPW and the police department and this board who really showed up for, for me and David to make that happen at the last minute. It is a completely non-scientific method of counting. In the last I counted, we were up to 10 million people were there. So.
Yes, yes.
It doubles every time we mention it, but this was a record-breaking event and I just want to thank everybody for their participation. Uh, on behalf of Tess, they asked me to let everybody know that the community garden, uh, season is coming to an end, 2025 season, and the leases expire in February of 2026. Um, you'd have to re-up them. For the 2026 season, registration will be first come, first served. And then it will open in March with a start date of April 1st. So if you did not get an opportunity, we, those eight plots went very quickly this year. So if you did not get an opportunity, this may be your chance to get a community garden plot. The planning board meeting has been adjourned for this month. On the zoning board is quite extensive. That's on November 12th at 7:30. 167 Dante and 216 Dante are both driveway expansions, front yard parking, uh, questions. 33 Main Street is the dance school and they are expanding the dance school. 70 Lake and Five Oak Avenue are looking to legalize existing basements. And 200 Alpine Place is looking for a permit to finish their basement. So I also want to take a moment to thank, uh, Trustee Danny Lang for your service on this board. And over the past eight years, on and off, your presence and sense of humor and commitment to the village are noteworthy. It's clear that you love your neighbors and you want to help them in any way that you can. So I wish you the best in all of your future endeavors. And I do want to reiterate what, um, Gary said. Danny has like some really great kids and they are very community service oriented and it has to come from somewhere. So it's, thank you, Trustee Lang. We put together a little care package for you of swag. Yes. We got, in there you'll find a hat. We liked that one better than the last one. And then I will end tonight by thanking, taking a moment to thank Omira, a leader whose impact on this village has been immeasurable. Mayor Andino, thank you for your years of dedicated service, your steadfast, steadfast leadership and your tireless efforts to meet the needs of every single resident who calls Toccoho home. You have guided this village with clarity, compassion, conviction, and we are all better for it. You've taught me to follow my North Star and that that is so important. And while it might be hard, hard things make you grow and then make us all a better version of ourselves. She makes me do a lot of hard things. Thank you for that. Um, most importantly, you've done all of this with a great sense of humor and a smile on your face and lots of love in your heart. On a personal note, I want to thank you for seeing something in me long before I fully realized it in myself. You've helped me articulate my visions, supported me as I work towards my goals, and perhaps more meaningfully, gave me space to figure out who I wanted to be as trustee and then as deputy mayor. The gift of trust and room to grow has shaped me in ways that I will carry for the rest of my professional and personal lives. Omira believes in people more than they believe in themselves, which is inspiring until she volunteers you for something you didn't know that you could do and probably didn't want to. I am also grate, grateful for the countless early morning conversations, the many, many meals we've shared. We eat a lot together. Each one a reminder of your passion for this work and your belief in the people around you. Mostly, I want to thank you for your mentorship and your partnership and your unwavering love for the village. Your legacy will live in the progress you sparked in every person you've lifted along the way.
Thank you. Can we sing this song? We have a song. We have a morning song. Mornings with the mayor, the song.
On behalf of the village, we want to give you these. Trustee Taylor has decided he hasn't spoken enough. So.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say congratulations to Trustee Lang on his eight years of service to the village. And in your next endeavors, I hope everything you needed to be.
Amen. So I am, I am going to ask you all to please give me a moment to get my thoughts out. There are a lot of them. I want to ask in advance that if I forgot any one particular person, count it to my head and not my heart, because there are a lot of people that I am truly grateful for. And, um, looking in this room, I'm grateful for all of you for showing up, for, um, challenging this board to be better each time, for coming and offering your suggestions. Um, I'm just truly grateful. Um, and never in my wildest dreams, as a little Puerto Rican girl from Brooklyn, did I imagine I'd one day serve as an elected official, let alone as mayor of this great community. Yet here I am, against all odds, filled with pride, humility and deep appreciation. The trust this community placed in me has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. And I mean that. Serving as mayor has given me the chance to contribute to something truly special. A place where people look out for one another, where local government is accessible and where small town hearts fuel big accomplishments. Wherever I go, I love to tell people we're small but mighty. Together, we've done a lot to be proud of. We passed legislation to protect our village's history. So the character and the story of Toccoho are preserved for generations. We paved more than half of our roads, upgraded critical infrastructure and secured millions of dollars in grants. Funding improvements to our library, our community center, our parks, traffic light infrastructure systems and the future downtown development of Depot Square, to name a few. We also completed our comprehensive plan, as you heard earlier, something that's long overdue and necessary as Chris DeGiorgio loves to remind us. It gives us clear direction, helps us make better decisions and prepares us to thrive in the years ahead. And we did it all with your input, your feedback and your participation. So thank you, Toccoho. I'm proud to say that our finances are in excellent shape. Don't believe otherwise. We achieved a double A bond rating, the highest in our village's history. And that's thanks to careful planning with this board and the outstanding work of our village treasurer, Ryan, our village administrator, David Burke, whose vigilance and competence have kept Toccoho strong and steady long before I was here. I thank the department heads. I thank all of the department heads that when they're asked to, uh, to cut back or to look at their, their budgets, they do so willingly, I think, at least to my face. But beyond the numbers, what I value the most is how we've strengthened community engagement. We opened the tent wider than before. We invited more people in, more voices, more perspectives and more hands ready to help. We proved that when people care enough to show up and work together, that real progress does happen. To our incredible village employees, thank you. You are the steady hand that keeps Toccoho running every single day. And I didn't have this appreciation for all that you do until I got into office. So I asked the residents who complain about our village employees, you have to walk in their shoes one day before you can make a judgment call. They are the unsung heroes doing the steady work that keeps everything moving. To our volunteers on boards and committees, thank you for volunteering your time and your expertise, some of you for decades. That includes like the planning and zoning boards, the comprehensive plan, the history committee, beautification, sign and awning. There are a lot of volunteers who give their time to make Toccoho all that it is. And I want to make sure that we honor that and we thank them. To our chief of police, Larry Rota and the entire police department, thank you for keeping us safe with professionalism and compassion, for being more than enforcement officers. You're the coaches for our kids, the steady hand for our seniors and the quiet strength for someone having a bad day. I have watched you play ball with our youth, lend a listening ear to our seniors and offer a smile to someone who's struggling. I see why so many of our young people want to serve as police officers in Toccoho. To our superintendent Frank DiMarco and our DPW, thank you for your tireless work through every season, keeping our streets, our parks and our public spaces beautiful. Many of you have served for decades and it's often a thankless job. You have chosen to do what many will not, and I'm grateful for your diligence and for your hard work. To recently retired director of the library, Swadish Pashnanda, who holds a really special place in my heart and the entire staff at the library, thank you for not only being a place where the community can come and check out books, but also a place that inspires curiosity and connection. Coming there has always been one of the great joys as my tenure as mayor, and I will continue to come and cook with you, Elaine. Thank you to our community center director, John Galuzzi, AKA Johnny Rocks, for his passion and heart that he brings to his work. I see how deeply he cares about this community and his commitment is truly unmatched. To our village administrator, David Burke, thank you for your steady leadership and genuine partnership. Working with you has been a privilege that I really do deeply value. I learned an incredible amount about government because of David. And I quickly came to appreciate how demanding your role is when leadership can shift with every election. I'm grateful for the way you've remained unwavering in your dedication to keeping Toccoho's future bright despite who's in office. But you're not going to get rid of me quite yet because I'm still going to serve on the Westchester Municipal Officers Executive Committee. So we'll still have date night once a month. The work that we do in Toccoho is not done in isolation. I want to thank our partners in government who have helped us become all that we are. Thank you to current county executive Ken Jenkins and former county executive, now Congressman George Latimer. Thank you to former Congressman Jamal Bowman. Thank you to state senator Shelley Mayer and Assemblywoman Amy Pollan. Thank you to our current county legislator, Judah Holstein, and our former legislator, Damon Marr. These partners helped us accomplish many of our goals. I thank them for being accessible to us and for being there when we needed them. I don't think any one of them that I've ever contacted has not reached back and has helped. Running for office and governing is no easy feat and no one can do it alone. I certainly have not. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank the many volunteers who helped make it possible for me to serve as mayor. To the chair of the Democratic Committee, Julie Gorden, who's here, I know I haven't always been the easiest to work with. Thank you for your patience, for believing in me and for being a steady force for so many of us over these past few years. To our former committee chair, Nick Neber, thank you for being there when there were only a handful of us trying to gain momentum. Nick, your leadership helped spark a movement and inspired people to get involved. To Krista Giorgio, who's here. To Chris DiGiorgio, who's here, I'm still undecided whether to thank or blame you. Not sure. It was, it was Chris's encouragement that pushed me to run for office in the first place. He saw something in me before I ever saw it in myself, and he pushed me to step forward when many others would not. And to all the volunteers who have galvanized our community, encouraged participation, and helped us get things done, there are too many to name, but please know that I am deeply grateful. I owe each of you a debt of gratitude. I want to say a special thank you to lovely Billups, a matriarch in the community. She's the real mayor, right? Everywhere I go, they tell me she's the mayor. But I seriously want to thank her for her encouragement, for her support, and for her brutal honesty at times that didn't feel so great. She's been a mentor and a mother figure in my life, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And I want to give you your flowers while you're here with us. To my fellow board members, past and present, thank you for your partnership, your passion, and your dedication. We may not have always seen eye to eye, Danny, but we've always shared one goal, and that's doing what's best for Tukahoe. And now to our future mayor, Kara Cronin. Let me be the first to say congratulations. You have, yes. You have been my ride or die as deputy mayor. No one works harder than you or thinks about the community more than you. I watched you come into office and work to streamline processes, include more voices in decision-making, and make Tukahoe arguably the most fun place to live. I can't wait to see what great things you'll accomplish as mayor. Thank you for being my colleague, but more importantly, for being my friend through the ups and downs. My simple advice to you is this, and you already said it. Follow your north star. Let your values and your love for this village continue to guide you. People will love you until the moment you don't do what they want. Make the hard decisions anyway. If you have to err, err on the side of what's best for the community as a whole, not the 20% who make 80% of the noise and engage in performative outrage. Stand your ground, even when it's hard because you're not here to win a popularity contest. You're here to make Tukahoe the very best version of itself. And remember that those who don't do will always criticize those who do. To the children and the young people of Tukahoe, my favorite. You have given me something to look forward to every single day as mayor. You brought me a sense of joy, heart, and innocence that reminds me of why community matters so much. You've given me a renewed hope for our future, not just as a village, but as a country. And I want the youth to never lose that spark. You are the promise of what comes next, and you make me believe our best days are still ahead. And finally, to my family, thank you for keeping me grounded and humble. You're my anchor, my reminder of who I am and why I serve. When I told my mom that I was elected as mayor, she said, okay, on Sunday, are you taking me shopping, grocery shopping? I'll never forget where I came from, and I hope my journey reminds others that the sky truly is the limit once you decided that it is. Thank you, Tukahoe, for allowing me the honor of serving as your mayor. It has really been the privilege of a lifetime. Thank you. Okay. So this will take us to the second opportunity. Well, we didn't give a first one, but that's okay. My last meeting, we're breaking all rules. If anyone would like to come forward, please do.
Good evening, everybody. I think somebody is cutting onions, so just bear with me. So first, I'll say, Danny, thank you for your service. I've known you for a long time. And as long as I've known you, you've always had a passion for community. It was a pleasure to see you serve in the capacity that you have, and I wish you and your children and family the best. You're welcome. So tonight, we celebrate Mayor Andino and her unwavering commitment and hands-on love for this village. You have invited us in, built pathways to serve. Sorry. Encouraged us residents and turned committees into launchpads for our community. I felt it personally, serving on the Juneteenth committee. You've made history and healing celebration and showed us that service is a love in action. Your legacy is a community that looks out for one another, where families feel seen, young people feel called, and everyday folks find their voice. You led with heart and consistency, and we are better because of you and chose, because you chose to lead and here with us. On behalf of this grateful village, thank you for the example. Thank you for the encouragement and the open door. As you turn the page to the next chap, to your next chapter, we'll carry the standard you set rooted in dignity, equity, and always respect. Let's keep building this together to everyone who remains. Join the movement if you aren't already and help us continue the works that Omira has traditionally stepped up. So that's it from my portion, no problem. But we are also going to celebrate Mayor Andino, and we want to extend this invitation to the entire community. Dear friends and neighbors, join us on Saturday, November 22, 2025, for a gilded evening honoring Mayor Andino. This is a fundraiser, and as she concludes, eight years of dedicated service to the village of Tukahoe. Enjoy a dinner, live entertainment, and more, and connecting with others who are committed to building a brighter future for our community. We'll dress to shine at this Gilded Age themed celebration, and it'll be at the Wicked Wolf North down the street by, it's in Yonkers, but it's a Tukahoe zip code. I'm always going to say that because I don't understand it, but we'll, we'll take it, right? So we'll be at the Wicked Wolf North in Scars, no, in Yonkers, on Scarsdale Road, and you can purchase, purchase tickets by seeing either Kara, myself, Julie, and everybody else that you know who volunteers to just support Omira, everything she does. Thank you.
Gilded Age?
Oh, I'm sorry. November 22, 2025. I think you could pick up tickets here, if I'm not mistaken, as well. But yes, please join us for an evening to actually commence this wonderful time in history. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Gilded Age, okay.
Do you have that outfit?
I don't have the outfit. I don't know, anyway.
I think she just found out about this Gilded Age party. And my name is Adrian Michelle. I'm a resident of the THA 35 Washington Street. I am so happy that we have new leadership.
I just want to know if David is coming and if he's getting dressed up.
All right, I just would like to say to Danny, you've done a wonderful job serving. You love this community, and it shows. Like, your kids, your wife, your family is awesome. And you did a wonderful job, and God bless you in your future endeavors. To Mayor Andino, it's been a pleasure working with you. Whenever you ask me to do something, I said, no problem.
He does.
This community, you know, even people say, oh, this, that, and the other. It's for the community. I don't care what they say. I will always be there. You've done a fantastic job. God bless you on your endeavors, and I will see you on November 22.
Wow.
All right, God bless you.
Can you say who you are? Can you say who you are?
Say your name and, and address.
Norrie Yancy, Ford Union Place.
Anyone else? At this point, you can just get up and form a alliance.
She's reminding me, I'm, she's being so sweet, reminding me how old I am. Danny, I met you way before you got into politics. You and your friend, Ron, were at the Tap House. Just citizens, I was so impressed with the fact that you and Ron were there, had purchased turkeys, which you were going to give to the community, and you were there trying to find the list of people to whom you would be giving such, I thought it was so generous and so loving. And you moved on into politics, and I wish you the best. Thank you for your service and hope everything goes well for you for the rest of your life. Thank you. Now, my wonderful, young, beautiful friend.
Tell me more.
Omira. Omira Andino. I, I, I'm very, very seldom, my loss for words, but I, I don't know how I can say all of the things that I'd like you to know. You broke the glass ceiling. And we would be remiss if we did not admit that you were the first female mayor, woman of Tukahoe, New York. Let's give a, a. And then, to top it off, you were a woman of color. And that was another first for Tukahoe.
Yep.
And it then indicates the beauty of this little village, that we could open up in a way to receive your blessings and your imagination and your talent and all of the things that make it so important for you to be the leader, the mayor of this village. I mean, we want to thank you for all of the things that you did. I just remember, and I just have to say this because you have to crawl before you walk. And I remember the early days of your coming to this office were not always pleasant, but like we are in Tukahoe. And you know, I love Tukahoe and how, and our diversity. We came through, and we have this time now to say to you, thank you. We're so proud of you in all of the iterations of who you are. And you're smart and beautiful and brown. Had to say that. And.
It's all true.
We wish you all, and something else I was going to say, but I lost it after brown. I am just proud to be your friend, and I'm proud to have been a part of your growth in mentoring. We would talk about so many things. Thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, dear Mayor Andino. I just want to say how much I have appreciated your leadership and all you have done for our village. You led with kindness, patience, and real heart. And that was so clear during the library renovation. Your support made a huge difference, not just to the library building, but for the people who use it every day. Thank you for all you have given, and I truly hope the next chapter brings you as much happiness as you have brought to others. And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And thank you so much, Danny, for all the support and the care for the library, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street. So Danny, sorry about the Yanks. And just so you know, I have tincture, seltzer, and gummies for you now that you. I, I want to say a few things about Danny. Danny's commitment to the village, everyone knows, so I'm not going to reiterate that. But what I think is really special about Danny was the way he raised his children, going to events, seeing the kids, doing some cleaning up of the river. I was very impressed by what Danny does. I think, Danny, what your next career should be, should be counseling parents on how to raise appropriate children. So, very good, great, awesome. So Marandino's done a lot of groovy stuff for the village, but I'm going to just say two things that stuck in my mind because you've already said a lot. When she first started, I was like, okay, she's going to do whatever she's going to do. And then I go to the event, what was that, the health event or whatever? And she's dunking Mayor Eklund. Forgot to say, that was awesome. And then the next time, Mayor Louiezy. That is bipartisanship that I think we need now in Washington. We need some dunking. And I want to thank, thank the mayor and the board and all the boards that you've served with since you started because I feel Tukahoe punches above its weight. For a small village, we do a lot of good stuff. We have a great team at all levels. And I especially want to thank Frank for what he does for the Tukahoe Environmental Committee and for the chief. And chief, I just want you to know that the former chief walks his dog around in retirement. So I think that's what your future is going to be, is to walk your little dog in retirement. But thank you, I appreciate it, and I wish you both well.
Thank you.
Hi, Johnny Steinhegen, South High Street. Marandino, I'd like to thank you for your leadership with the new comprehensive master plan. And I'd like to recognize that the 2009 comprehensive master plan, it essentially starts with this question of what is Tukahoe? And it starts to try to define it by looking at the history and the essence and the character of Tukahoe as it's embodied by the buildings that are called out in the comprehensive plan. And there was a number of people who said, Marandino, we look to you as, as a leader, and we would love to, what can we do? What can we do for this village? And I sincerely like to thank you for having an open door to listen to the village express concerns about our history. And I'd like to think that we stand on the shoulders of the giants who came before us. And I'd like to thank you for making it a little bit lighter for those who come after us. I think that you have done incredible work with our historic preservation legislation and our commission, and it wasn't easy, and it took a lot of time. And I really, truly admire your leadership with that. You are to be commended for celebrating Tukahoe's history, for saving Tukahoe's history, and for being a part of Tukahoe history. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike, I live on Wallace. Firstly, I'm a little ignorant. I had no idea it was your last too, so congratulations with that. But Marandino and I met a long time, like a while ago. I actually, I don't think I knew she was in politics. I just thought she was my buddy. And she is, she still is. And I just wanted to extend thanks and the things you've done for me, my family, and with the quickness, plays no games, that woman. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Go off and have fun.
Thank you, I intend to.
That's all I wanted to say.
Hi. My name is Marie, and I live on Wallace Street. And I have to say, when I came to her, I'm sorry, her, to Mayor Andino, that I had a problem. For over 19 years, I walked into her office because I got a little, I says, I got to see somebody from the top, and I went to the mayor. I sat with, her door was open, and I said, I just walked in. And she was like, okay, yeah, sit down, you know? And I told her what my problem was. She told me, okay, we're going to take care of this. And I left. There was something about her that told me she was really going to do something for me. But within four days after 19 years, she took care of it. It was like whiplash. And I like to thank you for helping me. You didn't make me feel like, oh, you know, who's this? What do I care, you know? I'm sitting in a chair and blah, blah. But you really helped me and my family and Kara. Also, I'm wishing you the best too. Also, I'm wishing you the best too. I remember speaking to her once on the phone. And you're tough and she's tough too. And I can't wait for her to get up there too, myself.
Amen.
I want to commend you and Danny. I knew you from when I first started, when I moved around here and I was on Oak. And I met your mother. God bless her. Rest her soul. And. When I look at you, I swear I'm looking at her. She's in my heart all this time, you know? When, God bless you too, Danny, your family and God bless.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You have to be strong around here.
It feels like the, no, it's okay. You finish.
I have opportunities to go into Bronxville, Scarsdale. I want to diverse for my kids. This way we all get along, no matter what. My kids are all about things.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
So it feels like the end of Hairspray when everybody's like all actually dancing together now. It's amazing.
We can arrange for that.
Good. Sarah Derisse, 204 Dante. I want to interrupt the Omira love for just a minute because I want to touch on what Daryl and Josh were saying about the SNAP benefits. For the third year, I'm working with Denise at Ecap on a food drive to help the people in our community, make sure that no one is going without. It was targeted a few weeks ago when we talked specifically for Thanksgiving, but we all know the need is going to be much bigger. So the idea is providing a full Thanksgiving meal to a family or a homebound senior. You shop for all the ingredients, you put it together in a basket or a sturdy shopping bag. And then Denise will take care of distributing it to the people that need it. Monetary donations are also accepted to help us buy the turkeys and the hams and all that stuff for people. You can reach out to Denise or you can call me. My number is 917-539-5583. And I can send you the information on how to get involved. So I really hope we get a lot of involvement this year because we are not a community that lets anyone go without. So thank you for that. And also, I love you too. And you are my North Star as well and a massive mentor to me. And we appreciate all the work you've done for us, Danny as well. Your love for this village shines through in all the work you've done for us. So thank you so much for being there for us as well. And that's all.
Thank you. And thank you for doing that every year, Sarah. Okay, take two.
Anthony Fiori, F-I-O-R-E.
F-I-O-R-E, you got it.
First, Danny, thanks for all your service here. I know I'll be seeing you around. If anything, just let me know. Marandino, thank you for all your service too. I'm another one that served under three mayors, soon to be next month with number four, fourth mayor.
But you like me the best, right?
There you go.
Just checking.
Tomorrow is election day. Make sure you go out and vote, pass your votes, friend. And starting Wednesday, there is another election coming up. The ones a little known about. I will be running again for Fire Commissioner, which is on December 9th, 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. Tocco residents will vote at the community center. Bronxville Village Hall, East Chester between Leroy Gorgi Post and East Chester Library. So make sure you get out and vote tomorrow and on December 9th.
Okay.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Hi, Morgan Slocum, 31 Midland Place. I'm not going to say too much because it's gotten long. But Mayor Andino, I love you so much. Thank you so much for all that you've done in my career. I work for the state government. And everywhere I go, someone has something positive to say about the village of Toccoho. So thank you for shattering glass ceilings for women like me that, you know, we look similar, you know? You're Afro Latina, our first Afro Latina mayor. So thank you. I love you. Thank you for the impact that you've made on not only my life, but the village residents of Toccoho. And Danny, thank you so much for your service. I don't know too much about what you've done, but I've seen you in the community and I've seen your love. So thank you. And Marandino, once again, thank you. Love you so much.
Thank you. Hello.
Beverly Christian, and I have my address.
And Sam.
And Samantha Christian.
72 Main Street.
72 Main Street. What gifts we have been given and how lucky I have been to receive these gifts. I have been so impressed by this village and the people that they put in responsible positions. I love what you do. I love what you've done. I am so thankful that I have lived in the era of Mayor Mandino. Ma'am, I gave you a new name. No, no, I just, I used to be a speech pathologist. This is embarrassing. But I want to thank both of you for making the village what it is because it is certainly a unique and generous and loving and welcoming space. Thank you so much for what you've done for us.
Thank you.
Sam, 72 Main Street. I'm going to get all the serious stuff out of the way. Tomorrow's election day, the last day for everybody to vote. And we've seen what happened with food stamps. If that could be cut, elections can be cut too. So it's very important that we all recognize our voting rights and vote. A new habit that we need to start doing. There is a great site called trackaiapac.com, which lists everybody who is up for election and everybody who's currently there and whether they have received money from a foreign government instead of being America only. So that's trackaiapac, T-R-A-C-K-A-I-P-A-C dot com. It has all the information about all elections and everybody running. So now the fun stuff. Candy Crawl. Oh my gosh, thank you so much. Future Mayor Cara Cronin, it was absolutely fabulous. I think it was a new record. We had the most people. Because I think even though we're always the favorite table, we ran out of candy faster this year.
Went up tonight, 13 million.
Yes, 13 million. Okay, you know, rounding up a bit, you know? So I just want to thank everybody who came and participated in the Candy Crawl. And from Toccoho Pride, thank you, everybody who joined us for our National Coming Out Day Celebration at the Broken Barrel Brewery on October 11th. It was such a great turnout. Thank you so much for that also. And Mayor, you're just such this fabulous person. Not many people know this, but I'm a super empath. I'm not just an empath, but a super empath. So when I say those uncomfortable truths about history and stuff, that's not me being brave. Me being brave is being around groups of people because I am forced to absorb all the emotions and thoughts of everybody in the room every single second. That's why I really don't like being in groups and being in public. So me being brave is joining committees, still going to meetings. And you made me feel comfortable and your impact, I can directly feel it and made the village calmer and more loving and accepting. So I want to thank you for.
Keep being brave. Keep being brave. Anyone else?
Hi, Julie Gorden, 56 Oakland Avenue. Thank you, Mayor Andino. Your terms as trustee and as mayor have been characterized by a drive towards inclusion and by improving the lives of all residents. You have shown that true leadership means listening to every voice, welcoming every perspective, and building bridges where others might divide. Thank you. Trustee Lang, thank you for all that you've done for Tocco as a community. I've seen you at the library events. I know you're a big supporter of the library. And I know that however you contribute as non-trustee will be to the benefit of all of us and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I know this is long, y'all, but this is it for us. So.
Yeah.
Danny and I are just going to bask in this glory.
50 Columbus. You know, what can I say? First, Danny, I just want to say thank you for your service for all these years. You know, when I was the former chair of the Tocco Democratic Committee, I was starting to get steeped into my ministerial career. And one of the teachings that I've learned is the concept of divine order. And what it is, is basically things happen in the right sequence. And, you know, the years from 2003 to 2017, when Omira came in, were building blocks for a fledgling democracy in Toccoho. Because we were a one-party town and I hope we continue to be now a two-party town. And I'll just be blunt, I didn't know who I had here as a person. I mean, I saw someone that was an amazing person, but I didn't realize all the talents and tools she had. And one of the first memories I had was our first fundraiser and seeing all the different people at our fundraiser that we never saw before. And I said, this is going to be different for us. And then as she has grown in the leadership, pockets of people that were invisible in this community started to become visible. And it became a community where everyone was participating, not just the select few. And her encouragement of the Juneteenth Committee, her encouragement of the Tocco Pride Committee were just examples of how we as a community have grown to levels we have not grown before. I mean, the many accomplishments of just doing the basics of what needs to happen for a village is admirable. But the one word I will say to the people of Tocco that describes Omira the best is connector. She somehow connected people together. And what I want to say is I know many more people now in the four years of her being mayor than I knew in the 20 years I was involved in the Democratic Committee because she connected me to so many people that were invisible and she made visible. And so, Omira, I admire you. I thank you. Your contributions will go on for a very long time in this community because you have brought people out that were not visible before. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Is it?
Please look at the photographs of the mayors out in the hall and realize when I talk about strength and diversity, how much I appreciate you because we got Omira and now they will be Mayor Tara, two ladies. But it really is something to go out and watch the years and years and decades of mayors. And then I'll leave it to your own imagination to go out and see what it looks like now. Good for you, Toccoho. Go Toccoho.
Thank you. Okay, is it?
People, I don't know if you know, but Omira is a perfect, a mayor is a perfect anagram of Omira. So unfortunately, I think our mayor has to change her name to Omira Retan so that a perfect anagram will be not a mayor.
I actually am an Omira Retan because I got that designation from one of the kids.
Oh, yes? Already? Okay, just checking.
We're good. We're good. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to say anything? Like my daughter, who's on there? Ciara? What's her note? She wants you to read her sentiments? Oh, you did? Okay, let's see. Let's see what she said. She said, Mom, I just want you to know how incredibly proud I am of you. Watching you lead as mayor and make such a positive impact has been so inspiring. You've accomplished so much and done it all with grace, strength, and heart. Even though this is your last term, your legacy will continue to shine. I'm so proud to be your daughter. Ciara. Very sweet. Thank you. So Toccoho, I will see you around. I have to figure out my outfit for the Gilded Age event. So somebody help me here. I can't, I really can't express how grateful I am for you all. I do thank God that I've had this opportunity. When I hear people say that I've allowed those who were not visible to be visible, I know what that feels like. I've been there. And so I am keenly aware of what that feels like. And it was vitally important for me to make sure that the tent was opened and that everyone was welcome in it. So please come out on December 1st because we will be celebrating our new mayor, Cara Cronin. And trustees who will be also elected. So make sure you get out tomorrow, November 4th. You can vote from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Do not give up your privilege, your privilege and your responsibility. People died so that we could vote. Please get out and vote if you have not already done so. Have a wonderful night, Toccoho. I love you and I will see you around.